Oh, James?
Yeah.
Now that you're the host, you're gonna have to give me the share screen options.
All right, you want me to do that now or you want me to wait?
Yeah, I'll try. I just wanna, rather than to make further delays, I'll try it now and then shut it down. But I just wanna make sure I can find it easily.
All right, you should be ready now.
Thank you. Nope, it's not allowing me to. Oh, there it goes, okay.
All right, the chair is experiencing some technical difficulties. She's asked for a five-minute to reboot her computer. For those in the public, we apologize for the delayed start. The meeting will occur in about five minutes.
Did you hear from the mayor?
That is Connie.
Right, perfect.
Hello?
You're coming through.
Okay, I'm just on my phone while my tablet is going through whatever it needs to go through. So as soon as I can log on on that, I will. But for now, I'll just do it on the phone.
Are you able to see screen, Ms. Martin?
I've got a hard copy.
Okay.
So I'll be able to jog along with that. But I apologize to everyone for taking, I don't know what happened on my technology end at this point. So sorry to keep everyone waiting.
We do have LTC as well as the remainder of the subcommittee. Also, Ms. Clark is in attendance. So whenever you're ready, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'd say we can call the subcommittee to order if the clerk, Mr. Hall, are you taking the role?
I am, Madam Chair. Roll call, Ms. Darty.
Here, but I'm not on finance, I don't think.
Yes.
Yes, apparently you are, Jackie.
Meeting, what? Okay, I must've just got added to. All right, I'm here, sorry.
This is a photo.
Yeah.
The chairperson, Martin.
Okay.
Re-present.
For those of you that are joining from the public, if you're not a committee member, if you can hit mute on your computer as well as turn your video camera off, that'll facilitate the public's viewing. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are launching tonight. We have the, basically the ESAR funding proposals that we are going to be considering. So we have, I believe, a PowerPoint that Ms. Turner will be taking us through to begin with the priorities of what we'll be doing with this funding.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Chair. So while I know the community is fully excited about what today brings by way of all of our students who are interested in coming to in-person learning, returning to school, that includes all of the elementary students who have already previously, prior to the break, returned to in-person learning, now all of our secondary students, while maintaining a full remote option for those families who are choosing to stay remote. This year has been so trying on all of our families in the entire community that the full focus and attention rightfully has been on this year. Now is also the time, obviously, that the school committee is going to be considering next year, particularly through the budgeting process. And this budgeting process includes the added opportunity of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. I'm gonna limit the introduction just to make sure that we can grab back some of the time from the delayed start. But Ms. Turner will walk the committee through current planning, what we've heard from the community, how we're planning for these funds. But it's important for the entire community to understand that we're still learning about the ESAR grant. The ESAR 2, as you'll hear, we have final information there, but we're still awaiting final information on ESAR 3. So these decisions will ultimately roll into the final budget recommendation to the committee, but this is still within a vetting process. So we're very much interested in hearing the committee's feedback, hearing any questions as we continue to plan forward. Ms. Turner?
So the one thing that we need to point out is that every district is facing the challenges that we're facing, and they're all going through the same planning process that we are, although we think we're doing a great job because we're vetting everything that we're doing, all the research and the decisions that we've come to through the community, through the teachers and parents and school site councils. The agenda today is to go over a summary of ESAR funding, to recap on the core beliefs, fundamental commitments, and strategic goals, discuss the guidance principles and resource allocation, discuss the multi-tiered support system that will accelerate student learning, and what the next steps between now and implementation will be. This screen has been shared with you numerous times. It's simply just a way to point out that we did receive $17.8 million from ESAR 2, and that sounds like a significant amount of money, and we're very grateful for it. But we did expect the original 20.7, which is listed below. This is a categorical grant, so we have to follow the rules on spending. We can't just, you know, decide on our own. We have to address learning loss and whatever those stipulations are that the D E S E will point out what fits under the learning loss category. ESAR 3 has not been released, but in front of you now, I have an estimate from the Mass Teachers Association. They're estimating that we would get $40.2 million. The Senate estimate predicted $43.9 million, which is more than $3 million higher. So we tried to balance to the $40.2 million to be safe, but um...
Could somebody mute, just mute everybody?
If you're not on the... Thank you. Those of you that are not on the committee, if you can monitor your microphones, thank you. Go ahead, Billy Joe.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So anyway, this is just showing you that we're, where we balanced to the $40.2 million, being that that's a more conservative figure, but we're hoping for the 43.9. This slide is a really important slide. It's a slide that shows why we should, you know, be very cautious not to fall off of a funding cliff in a couple of years. The red line shows that due to state revenues, the dip in, if the blue dotted line is what we expect to spend year to year. And if the red line is showing you that due to the reduction in state revenues, there's actually a gap. Well, the federal government fills that gap with the ESAR funds. That's the green section. So the federal money is enabling us to maintain our cost structure, but eventually it will run out. So non-recurring dollars, if used responsibly and responsibly, cannot be applied toward large-scale recurring costs such as salary increases or employee benefits, because when the federal aid stops, we would have no way to fund those things. That's why a multi-year funding strategy was required to minimize the impact of the reduction in federal aid and to sustain support for students. And you can see in 2020, that's when COVID hits. The dollars are indicating when we get in all the federal funds, and then that will last to 2022 and '23, and then it stops. So this is a good way of just reminding us why it's important to do non-recurring costs in our, wherever it's possible, because obviously, in order to address learning loss, we do still need to implement some costs that may be a recurring cost if we wanted to continue with it. So after obtaining research and input from community members and school site councils, teachers, parents, we got a lot of different input, but we can't do everything. So with us not being able to do everything, we ended up using these guiding principles to decide on how we think ESAR 2 and ESAR 3 should be spent. So using the input in the research, we decided that we would use strategic alignment. If we use the strategic alignment of our priorities with the district's overarching plan for systemic improvement, if we use research-based information that would support the empirical evidence, if we focus on equity, if we focus on community involvement, which we know is essential to building an effective plan for accelerating learning in the classroom, and if we're responsible with fiscal management, then we can make wise decisions. With the responsible fiscal management, just to reiterate the previous slide, ESAR 2 and 3 represent non-recurring revenue that will create a fiscal cliff for the district at the conclusion of the grant cycle. Mitigating the impact of this inevitable cliff requires a multi-year budget strategy with prioritization of high-impact non-recurring investments. That's why unlike some districts, some of our fellow districts who just planned this coming year, we mapped out the next three years in this presentation to show you how we plan on addressing all of our strategic investments over the next three years. So this one, this first slide is just going in hand with the first guiding principle of strategic alignment. You've already learned about our core beliefs, fundamental commitments, strategies, and goals. So one of the things that the research has shown us is that a multi-tiered support system to accelerate student learning is needed. Both research and feedback has shown that that's what we need. So there are five investments that can help us do that, that these investments cut across two tiers, both district support and intensive support for Renaissance schools. The five investments that we would like to invest in with the ESAR funds include, we would like to extend the learning time across the district, we would like to support teachers to improve classroom practice through PD, we would like to support students with strategic school-based interventions, we would like to meet the non-instructional needs of students and school communities, and we would also like to support the homeschool partnership. So these are the five investments that this presentation will cover. The way the presentation is going to make this clear to you is we will state the investment, why the investment is important, what the total investment would be, what you should see from each of the investments, and then there will be a spreadsheet at the end of each of the investments that breaks down for transparency sake, what the costs are, and what year it would be covered, year 1, 2, and 3, and whether ESAR 2 or ESAR 3 would cover it. So for those people that like to dig into the details, that would be on that final slide after each of the investments. So this first investment, as we said from that previous slide, is to extend the learning time for students. Why is this important? Well, additional learning time within the standard school calendar and outside of the school day are required to account for the COVID-related losses in the academic time, which included a reduction from the standard 180 days to 170 days for all students, as well as the inconsistent daily attendance and engagement levels for students who experienced difficulty in the remote environment. So this is why it was important. What we would like to invest in that is $8.7 million. What you would see with this, what you would get for $8.7 million would be three full days per year of additional learning time would be added for all students in the district. This totals nine additional school days over the three-year grant cycle. This is without shift in end dates of the overall school calendar. What we would do is eliminate the half-days, the six half-days per year. What you would also see with this investment is the after-school program would be expanded to include programs at every school in the district, and the enrollment capacity would be expanded with space available for every student who has identified at each school. be expanded with space available for every student who has identified at each school as requiring additional academic support. The summer program would be expanded to include programs at every school in the district. And again, the enrollment capacity would be expanded with space available for every student who's identified at each school as requiring additional academic support. And as I explained, at the end of each investment, so for the extended school time investment, here is a spreadsheet that would show you the eliminate, eliminating early release days doesn't cost us anything, so we but we still wanted to put that there, so you see that it's still one of our goals. We would also offer the Twilight After School Program. We would offer a summer program and Transportation for Summer Program, and then it shows you how much each year would cost. So that eight point seven million dollars is actually spread over the three years. So everything we're offering under that investment is, you know, going to last for three years. The next investment we would like to support would be supporting students with strategic school-based interventions. By the way, the red verbiage under each of the titles is tying the investment to our strategic plan, so that you could see how everything that we're trying to invest in ties to the strategic plan of the district. So why this in particular investment is important is that the impact of COVID nineteen has been found to be more significant for some students and more moderate for others, with that impact ranging from academic challenges to social and emotional wellness, requiring school-based resources that can be tailored by school communities to meet the individual needs of each child. This investment would cost us approximately fourteen point two million dollars. What you would see with that fourteen point two million dollars includes the following. As you know, we supported four million dollar increases to the school site budgets. So the additional school-based positions that were added during this process to support student-based, students based on individual school need assessments and school site council determinations include five social workers, eleven teachers included interventionists, four one-to-one paras, six E L L paras, twelve mainstream paras, two instructional resource teachers, one instructional specialist, thirty-four additional tutors, and fifteen S E L tutors. Another thing is one of the schools actually added a library media specialist, but I didn't put that on here, but those are just examples of what that four million dollars was able to fund. It's not that I'm going to take all of these positions and put them on the S R grant, it's that the extra S R grant money allowed for this type of spending. We might keep it simple and clean and move all the social workers to the S R grant just for, you know, for simplicity's sake, but we wanted you to understand what the four million dollars was, what it allowed us to get for additional school-based positions. We'll move. Okay. So another thing that you would see with the fourteen point two million dollar investment would be a full-time virtual school would be established in S Y twenty-one, twenty-two for students in grades seven through twelve as a permanent addition to the district's alternative school portfolio. So in other words, next year, we want to continue to offer a remote learning option for the secondary students. We do recognize that a small subset of the students perform at a higher level in a remote environment, and some parents and families might want to continue with the remote learning due to their own individual circumstances. This virtual school would serve up to four hundred middle and high school students with a flexible and rigorous instructional model, which would include an embedded socially and emotionally learning curriculum, and also opportunities for individualized in-person tutoring. Again, at the end of each of these investments, we try to give the spreadsheet that shows the actual breakdown. It shows the plus four million dollars. It shows that with these, with this investment, we would do a social worker. V A stands for Virtual Academy, so you would see what we would need in order to run that virtual academy and where that fourteen point two million dollars came from.
Have a question?
Yes?
Back on on slide fifteen. Is that four hundred number like cast in stone, or could this number increase if there's there are more families interested in opting in, or is this the maximum?
For planning purposes, Committee Member Dakota, this is the number that that we estimate and forecast and project. Ultimately, if we change this number, it'll change the budget numbers. So if you flip to the next screen, Ms. Turner. So we have to use a number to forecast. We believe this to be a reasonable number right now, but obviously, with the evolution, the continued evolution of COVID nineteen, it could change. That'll also change the number here. An important note while I'm referencing the numbers, you see this is only in year one, because the students themselves are funded through the Fair Student Funding. The number is needed in order for startup, so that we're not pulling students arbitrarily from schools in order to fund a school. So the grant allows us to start this school up without compromising the budgets of any other schools, and then the number of students will fund it. So if there's more demand, ultimately, the student funding will follow. Except for year one, we have to establish a number just to establish startup costs and for planning. If you need more details, Committee Member Dakota, Ms. Desmond is leading the planning of this, and she is on the line.
So the next investment is to support our teachers to improve classroom practice. Why is this important? Well, relevant and meaningful professional development for teachers has been consistently found to improve student learning with the direct correlations documented between teacher quality and student performance across multiple studies. This investment would cost us approximately twelve point three million dollars. Why won't it go to that? Sorry. All right. So what you would see with this investment would be thirty-four hours per year of additional professional learning time, which would be added to every teacher and instructional support provider in the district. This would actually total more than a hundred hours over the three-year grant cycle, and it would support improvements in teaching and learning. Additional support would be provided through professional learning of the teachers and support staff across the district to embed culturally and linguistically sustained practices within the curriculum. Also, targeted support would be added for all schools within the Renaissance Network to improve school-based professional learning through the implementation of a collaborative coaching and learning model. Again, here's, I don't know why this does this.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you, I know you can't see everything through the phone. I see Committee Member Dakota is raising his hand.
Yep. Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Is, is what on this slide eighteen, is this something that is going to have to be negotiated with the teachers' union?
Well, would need to be negotiated, Committee Member Dakota, is whether the requirements are mandatory or voluntary. The current contract that the committee has, the current collective bargaining agreement, allows the committee to implement this on a voluntary basis. In order to make it, if the committee determined and desired to make it mandatory, that would need to be negotiated through with the with the U T L. We have, we have, we have engaged in preliminary conversations there with U T L on that.
Thank you.
So again, here's the spreadsheet that summarizes the funding, where the numbers come from, the P D at forty-two weeks, C L S P coordinator, a deputy C A O, academic coaches, two additional days of professional development, and three data inquiry facilitators. These would all support the high-quality teacher investment.
So can I just note, so in several of these areas, we are talking significantly about adding staff.
Yes, to address the learning loss, because even though we don't want to add a bunch of staff that would end up having, you know, we'd lose them in a couple of years, there are, there are certain positions that we need to address the learning loss and to continue to move forward. And I mean, fifty, sixty million dollars, we couldn't spend it on all non-instructional, I mean, all non-salary positions. We need to spend it on some salaries, otherwise we'd never be able to come up with that many ideas. So the next investment is meeting the non-instructional needs of students in school communities. Other factors beyond classroom teaching can have a significant impact on whether students have access to meaningful learning. School communities, which have historically required additional support, will need even more resources as they work to reconnect and reengage the students who have been disconnected from the learning environment. And some school buildings require physical upgrades to create classroom environments that are more conducive to teaching and learning now and into the future. So this investment, we're expecting to spend twenty-three point eight million dollars. And what we would see for that twenty-three point eight million would be a student resource center would be established to recruit and reengage students who have dropped out of school through direct outreach to the students, families, and community-based organizations. We would also coordinate and align services in the district's alternative school portfolio to better meet the needs of our most at-risk students. School climate specialists would be added to every school, every elementary, middle, and K eight school in the Renaissance Network. This, these specialists would support students who experience challenges with the transition back to an in-person learning environment, and it would ensure that every school in the network is safe and welcoming for all students. This investment would also help us with our investments in H vac system upgrades, which would be made to further support air quality and enhance the temperature control in the classrooms. And last, we would also have significant investments in our multi-year digital learning plan, which will continue across the district. We did make a significant investment last year for Chromebooks, so that we could have a one-to-one device program, but it's requiring a continual, you know, replenishment of broken devices or new students coming in. We'll have to continuously invest in this multi-year digital learning plan. Here's the summary spreadsheet for this investment, and it shows all of the different investments that we would do under this plan and how much by year and which grant is going to cover it. This has a Director of Technology, which we need due to all of the technology we're pouring into the system. It's requiring an additional investment, the digital investment of seven hundred and fifty thousand per year. It's actually going to be more like one point two of one point four million dollars for this coming year due to having to replenish devices and purchase the insurance for the devices. The district-wide H vac investment of fourteen point nine million, this is a placeholder. This amount, if we do get the additional S R three funds that, you know, that the Senate predicted, we could increase this amount if we so chose. And fortunately, if we, for some reason, got less than the predictions held, we could adjust this district-wide H vac investment, again, a placeholder. A district-wide safety coordinator would be included, a lead data analyst, the Director of Alternative Education, which would also include a clerk, a student outreach liaison, and six specialists at seven, seven different schools, no, I'm sorry, six specialists at six different schools, which are the Renaissance schools except for law high. The next investment would be to, it's actually the last investment, the last of the five investments. The last investment is to support the homeschool partnership. This is important because the connection between home and school has historically been found to be an important factor in the success of students in the classroom. That partnership became even more critical in the remote learning environment and will continue to be essential as students transition back to in-person learning in the fall. This investment, we're estimating to cost two point seven million dollars. What we'll see out of this investment would be a parent leadership institute. This would be established to increase family literacy. We would have the centrally coordinated, it would be a school-based morning, evening, and weekend workshop and learning events for parents, guardians, and families of students. We would also have bilingual family liaisons added to every school in the Renaissance Network to support the students and families of linguistically diverse backgrounds. So again, at the end of each of the investments, we tried to summarize it with what we would, what we would need to add in there in order for you to accomplish those investments. This one would have the bilingual parent liaison at each of the six, I'm sorry, network schools. The director, the twenty-eight, twenty-eight schools for thirty-five weeks, eight hours of activities for the parents and supplies for this parent university. And then we would also ask for a front desk support at the F R C. And so our next steps after, well, what this actually says, next steps is to host a focus group and forum. We've already done that. We've held three or four of them already, where we gathered additional community input. The next steps would include after this, to balance the S R spending plans with the final grant amounts when they're available, to continue collaboration with city agencies and community partners to further refine investment opportunities related to the facilities, professional learning, and extended learning time, to prepare and submit grant applications to the Department of Ed. To follow, I mean, and also following the approval of the final grant application, we would post the jobs interview and hire highly qualified educators for all newly identified positions. We would post requests for proposals and complete all remaining required steps in the procurement process for all contractual services. And just as a point of reference, this slide right before I skipped over it, being that we're not doing the surveys right now, but after each of our forums, we did ask all of the participants to fill out this survey to give us their additional feedback with, you know, concerns and feedback over the plan we had shared with them. And that's all.
So any, any questions? We have, in addition to Ms. Turner, you noticed that, obviously, given the fact that we're addressing learning loss here, primarily investments in teaching and learning, so Ms. Desmond is on the line as well. You saw Dr. Hall, who's also acting as the clerk today.
Um, well, I, it's a great deal of information, and I appreciate everything that's gone into kind of these, these large overarching plans, which I think are on target. I do think that the challenge for us is going to be that we're kind of going through this process in tandem with our traditional budget process. And I do think it is getting, for me, it's at least getting a little confusing with positions being posted in multiple places, and we're talking about the the student-based decision-making kind of in concert with both S R and with our traditional budget process. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to kind of craft a document that's going to allow the committee and the community to be able to see how these funding sources are playing off each other, like even just breaking out, I think, you know, I think one of the key things is that we're going to be wanting to look at positions, the positions that we're adding. So positions that we're adding as part of our traditional budget process, positions that we're adding as part of the student-based, I'm sorry, the site-based funding recommendations from the school site councils and decisions that, and positions rather, that will be attached specifically to this S R effort that has a three-year lifespan. So that may be a big, a big ask, but coming up with some kind of documentation that's going to allow us to track that across these kind of three different areas, I think, would be hugely helpful.
Ms. Martin, just so you know, the way I was thinking of it, and if you confirm for me right now that it will work for you, then I'll continue on. What I, what I was doing is, you know how in the past years, we would have the regular budget document that you're accustomed to, sorted by D O E function code, but then it would have a general fund column and a grant column? Well, these are too big to put just include in the grant column, so what I was going to do is add the S R cost, and then just I had, I added two additional columns, S R two and S R three, which I could combine them just to keep it simpler, but then that way you'll see everything on the main budget document, but I can highlight all the S R costs and put them in a separate column. And then what I would do is a summary of all the positions added under S R and all the positions added under school site budgeting and all the positions added under regular chapter seventies, so that it would be just a summary document showing all three ads on separate sheets of paper, you know, like a cheat sheet. So you'll have it both in the budget and as a cheat sheet.
Yeah, I think that sounds like Yeah, I think that sounds like it would be helpful. I think, I think combining S R two and three for our purposes is fine. Cause it, it's not going to make a difference for, you know, for our considerations, those two different kind of grants. So combining those is great. Um, and I think being able to have that, the, the position information kind of pulled out. So that we can look at it, you know. And clearly see what's kind of long-term, what's a, a three-year commitment, you know, I think that would be very helpful. I don't know, and I'm sorry, I can't see everyone. So if anyone has any questions, please just yell out.
I, I have a couple of questions if I could, Ms. Martin.
Yes, please do.
Um, I'm, I'm also concerned about the number of positions that we're adding. Uh, just because as we know, they're non-recurring funds. So I think that any way, as Ms. Martin had talked about. To kind of organize it for us in a way that we could get the big picture. Like, do you know? Um, how many positions overall we're talking about? Because I counted just in, uh, one of yours. I think we're looking at um forty-one new positions under the, the category of um. Improving instructional. And so that's like forty-one new full-time positions, but that didn't go into all the other areas. Do you have, does anyone have a number of how many full-time positions we're thinking about adding?
Ms. Turner, do you have that number handy?
No, but I could have it while we're, you know, while we're talking about others. So I do know we have over ninety positions through the school site budgeting. Um, and let's, and I will find you a total.
But I mean, but I could see that being part of the additional information or the additional way you're going to provide the information going forward. Uh, it does seem like, and I know that, as you said, you know, our business is teaching and so we need people for that. That's our, we don't have a product. We have, uh, we have staff that teach our students. So I understand that, but that leads me to my second area that kind of jumped out at me. So. Um, we've allocated, I believe, uh, to over twelve million for professional development, correct? Out of the, out of this bucket of money. But prior, a few weeks ago. Uh, the committee voted, I thought it was two and a half million out of the current year savings for professional development. Is that correct?
Uh, I think approximately. Do you have the specifics? Uh, I think your memory is fairly close.
It is two million.
Okay, so we're looking at um. Twelve million going forward, two million out of the current savings. And that seems like a huge um. Investment in professional development. I'm just wondering. What kind of feedback we got from teachers? If that was their number one? Like what's going to help you the most? Because when I talk to teachers about what they want. They want more bodies. And, and again, I know that's part of what the, some of these full-time positions. But I'm thinking of the tutors. I mean, we get so much bang for our buck with our tutors, especially when many of them are retired low teachers. And I noticed that in that, that plan, you do have thirty-four tutors and fifteen S L tutors. Um, to me, I'm thinking maybe we want to wait more heavily on the tutors because we're not locked into those full-time positions. With benefits that then three years when the money's gone, we fall off that financial cliff as Ms. Turner referenced. So that's another area that I'm, I'm looking for. Um, maybe some more input from our teachers. Or do you feel like that is what teachers want? They want more? And obviously, professional development is essential. And it, you know, but it, it also needs to be really good professional development to have a value. And if we're, as Mr. Dakota mentioned earlier, there's going to be issues about. Can we make it, can we mandate it? We're going to have to bargain that as opposed to being voluntary. And then if it's voluntary, you can't always. Uh, assume that you're going to get the teachers that most need to be in the room getting the professional development. So that's where the tutoring thing kind of jumps out at me. And, and just while I've, I've got the floor, I want to just, um. And then I'll leave with the two questions after. I want to make one more comment. Um, as you saw from the motion I have last week. About uh, the unfairness in terms of our access, equal access to outside. Structures and play areas for our students and how much that impacts social and emotional health and just, you know, feeling good about. Yourself and not being so anxious, being able to get outside. I'd like to carve some of that, the two plus million out of this year's savings that we put towards professional development. And use some of that for these structures. And, and getting fair that every school has an outdoor play space. I think it's something that our families value. I know my colleagues on the committee. Know there's a, you know, a real benefit that if children can get outside. And especially with these extended programs, extended day, extended summer. Um, that's where I'm thinking maybe not so much for professional development. Using it for some other areas that would also be helpful to our families. So my last, my two questions really for right now. Are, tell me a little bit more about what the engagement has been with teachers. In order to say this is what our teachers want. They want, you know, thirty-four hours of professional, a hundred-plus hours of professional development over the next three years. As opposed to more, more people in the, in the rooms, more tutors, more whatever. And then the second one is. Um, who are the community partners that we've been um coordinating with? To develop this plan? Because I, I, again, that's also a, for me, another group that we could really collaborate and learn from each other. Thank you.
I, I could answer the first part about the tutors and then um. The superintendent can, you know, um, discuss the community partners and all. But. One thing that I have to say, as, as far as the additional fifty tutors. That's from the four million extra dollars that we gave to the schools. That was what they elected to spend. One of the concerns is that they're not going to be able to find enough people to satisfy the current tutors that we have. And the additional tutors that we're going to hire. But what, just so you know, that that's just for this coming year, we did a four million dollar investment. The, the plan that we have gives the schools an additional four million next year. And an additional four million the year after for them to spend in the way that they and their school site councils choose to spend it on. So if they want to increase the number of tutors, um, you know, with a, almost like a compound and thing, if they have five now and they want five more next year, they can. So I agree with you that you do get a lot of bang for your buck, but that's how many they chose to spend with, with fair student funding, giving them the autonomy to do so. So. Um, with the P D, even though it's twelve million, it's actually divided over the three years. So it's only um, four million per year.
Thank you. I think, uh, I think also what's important here, Committee Member Dougherty, is that. There is, this is a multi-tiered system, making sure that we're getting after student learning loss in a multitude of ways. Uh, making sure that the level of intensity of support is elevated with the higher need schools and making sure that we're providing a, a system that's targeting student learning loss in a number of different directions. The professional development uh has been found consistently within the literature. As being the highest impact correlation uh with student outcomes. Teacher quality to student outcomes improved through meaningful professional development. You are accurate that it has to be meaningful and relevant in order to provide those types of dividends. It's also important to recognize that the sustainability of these dollars is far greater through building the capacity of our staff. So there is also targeted support here uh within redesigning our school-based professional development model through a collaborative coaching and learning model. The districts use that model in different ways and different schools historically over time. But there hasn't been a comprehensive, dedicated approach uh in recent years to developing that type of, true type of collaborative. Uh, coaching and learning model. There's investment there to make sure that we can support our instructional specialists, our school-based coaches, so that we can support teachers. So. It's a significant investment in building capacity which allows us to sustain the results over time. And. Uh, I will tell you, it's uh directly aligned with the literature. Uh, and also we've heard feedback from our staff, not necessarily in terms of uh. In terms of more people, because there's a significant add here in terms of people. But that professional development is more beneficial than even more learning time. So if we're going to be extending the days for our teachers, there's a balance here between extending learning time for students. And also balancing that with additional professional development for our staff. Uh, one thing that was in consideration is could we target those dollars? Uh, instead of additional P D, just extending, further extending learning time. And that was clear feedback that we received that there needs to be a balance there, that the extended learning is important for many kids, but the professional development. Is, has been far more beneficial historically in this district for our teachers in terms of supporting kids. Um, there also is a balance to, to target in more staff. I think Ms. Turner's point's accurate. As well as the point that Ms. Martin made in that, you know, there's a question of sustainability. Three years is a lot of time for the committee to be planning for dollars, obviously. Typically, we're looking at a one-year horizon with. Some commitments without guarantees of dollars. Here are guarantees of dollars over three years. So that mitigates it with us looking at three years, but it is also important for us to minimize, and we think we've minimized. The number of staff. While it sounds like a large number, you are talking about approximately here, a little bit less than sixty million dollars over three years. So. When you're talking about the number of staff that Ms. Turner just referenced. It, it has intentionally and strategically been minimized to avoid those, avoid those cliffs. Professional development and reducing professional development time doesn't have that same type of, of cliff effect. But we'll certainly analyze it and assess it further. Uh, I think there was a question as well about the number of people involved. Uh, in addition, there's, uh, I think at this point approximately uh four hundred different individuals have been directly involved in terms of feedback, either through forums, focus groups or school site councils. Is that number accurate, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
And then there's a, we have a group of individuals that we work with that are can, um. Either the heads of or liaisons through the various agencies that support our after-school and within-school programming. Uh, we did a separate uh forum just with those individuals. And we can provide you the names of those agencies. Every agency that has involvement directly in our schools uh isn't, is a part of that uh. That group, for lack of a better terminology. Uh, we just, we met with them last week to go through a similar conversation as to this one. Ms. Martin.
She's muted.
Yeah. Madam Chair, you're on a mute.
I'd like to thank Jim for that. Um, so, um, you know, another consideration that we're just going to need to kind of, that we can't change, but we need to be aware of. You know, we, we don't function in a vacuum, obviously. We're going to be looking at some pretty dramatic staffing needs. Every other district, every other district in the country is going to be facing the same challenge. So finding quality staff is going to be a real, uh, a real challenge for us. Uh, especially when you look at these, these significant numbers of uh positions that we're looking at. So just something for us. You know, kind of all to be aware of. Um. Uh, and then I would say, I don't know if there are any other questions or additional information that people are interested in before we. Call this. Okay. Well, I, you know, I think we all recognize this is a really extraordinary uh situation and an extraordinary opportunity. For our, uh, for our district. I think there are a number of different initiatives that have been kind of. Charted out in this that, that really I think bode well for our kind of re-entry come next September uh and beyond. Uh, obviously, the, the recognition that. Um, I think the, the quality of our interventions with students, both in academic as well as social, emotional. Uh, areas are going to be critical to bringing our district kind of back on its feet. Um, after what has been a, uh, an amazingly challenging period. Uh, so I appreciate that there's such significant investment in that. Um, and I think it will be helpful as we go through kind of. As much as we can to look at this in a comprehensive way with all of our funding sources kind of. You know, displayed in one. Comprehensive view so that it'll help us, I think, be able to balance the, the many different priorities that we'll be balancing during these next few months. Are there any other questions, comments?
I, I want to make one comment if I could, just because if I don't do it now, the next time we, um, we meet will be when the presentation's already complete. But I wanted to point out that um, the, you know, when I said over ninety positions were added due to the additional four million dollars that was invested in schools. Those positions are not necessarily going to be the positions that you put on the grant. It's because of the grant money that we're able to get it, but I'm going to try to keep it as simple as and clean as possible. So instead of doing one, one art teacher, one music, one, you know, all like that, you might just say, oh, we'll just put four million dollars of social workers over on the grant. Which frees up the money, you know. Um, it, I'm trying to follow what the other school districts are doing to keep it simple and clean. So when I prepare the summary list. Um, it might not list all the ninety positions that you just saw on that spreadsheet that I just shared. You might see social workers instead because. The four million dollars is four additional million dollars and that's what they purchased with four additional million dollars. But now that we're writing the grant application, we want to keep it as clean as possible and not have it too messy. So I just wanted to point that out to you.
Hillary Jo.
Yes.
Um, are you referring to the sheets that are listed under a draft of changes at schools until budgets are complete?
I wasn't, I wasn't actually, um, that, yes, I was referring to on the slideshow, there's a summary, but what you're looking at is actually the details. So yes, you, those details are, um, if you wanted to learn, so in the presentation, it's a summary of all schools. But what you're looking at in that memo packet shows it everything by school so that you could see what each of the schools added into, reduced.
So I, so I have a question on the, the low high, two music teachers that eliminates music.
No, they actually, what, there's a mistake. There was, they've only, they, so when I went over and reconciled their budget with them. Um, their roster, we, they thought they, they didn't have any vacancies in music. And I'm saying, but you do, there's two more in the budget. And they say, no, we have our full music staff. So what happened is the, it was entered, what happened is the, um, the three band teachers. Um, they must have been including them in their account when they built the budget last year. So that now they were able to reduce, but they didn't cut anyone.
Okay.
And the band teachers are still included too.
Just so you know, I was having palpitations on now.
Oh, no. And the band teachers are still there. I knew, I, I worried about that. No, you know, we have to fill a couple of those positions, but, um, I think still. But I was where, thinking of you making sure that I kept district band teachers separate.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, this is Hillary Clark. I just wanted to say to you something that you said a moment ago, just made me think about, um, you know, the professional development conversation. Um, and the retention of staff, good staff, finding, you know, find a good, good teachers, good staff to work in our district. And really maintaining them. Um, you know, it's professional, having a strong professional development program. Um, is, is such, I think, an important part of that. There's real value in that. So I see that as investing in our staff, investing in the long-term sustainability of maintaining good staff and employees. And really strengthening, you know, the work that our staff do at, at our schools for the benefit of our children. Um, you know, I, I, I really, I think there is a, a, from what I'm hearing. That investment could really go a long way. Um, and I think, right, done right, done well. Um, in the, the topics that we need our, our, um, districts to invest in. Um, but I, I do see value there. And I just appreciate the conversation about getting also the list of, um, you know, specific. Uh, positions that are, you know, the different grant funding, because right, there is a lot of information coming at us. Um, all at one time. And I just want to say thank you, Ms. Turner, for putting it together in a, in an organized fashion. Um, and for the additional materials that we know we're going to be getting. But I, but I just wanted to put that point, you know, coming from a human resources perspective. That, um, you know, having strong professional development is really, it trickles down in so many ways uh to strengthening our community. And, um, and I do believe that, um, a, at the district level, we can really identify some areas that are going to be critically important. Not just for recovering for this, from this pandemic, but also just long-term vision and goals uh for our district as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, just one point, I wanted to make sure that you knew that, um, the superintendent, actually, if it wasn't, he, he's the mastermind behind this plan. So it was his organization of. Um, investments and all that made this presentation. Um, or such a complicated topic, easy to explain. So thank you to the superintendent for that one.
Not, not, not on me. This is your presentation. So we appreciate the compliment, though, Ms. Turner, but there are other people on the, I see names in the room. So. Uh, there's been a lot of staff that has provided input. So I want the committee to, to know. Uh, you know, building out the extended learning program, the summer program and after-school has been a, a. the summer program and after-school's been a real team effort in the Office of Teaching and Learning. That work is ongoing to make sure those programs are robust. Digital learning plan is being built out as well within the Office of Teaching and Learning, as is the Virtual Academy that you saw. So you did see some additional investments in staff. But right now, those are just investments on paper. So it's the current staff that has picked up all of this work on top of the work they've already been doing under the leadership of Robyn Desmond. And I see Carolyn Rocheloe's name. I don't know, Carolyn, if that actually happens to be you, but incredible work that Carolyn and the team are doing. So you will see some additional investments there because there's a lot of investment in support, investment in programming. And we've got to manage that programming across. And right now, we're relying on the same staff. So the Office of Teaching and Learning's picked up an immense lift to get us to this point. And we've got further to go before we're ready for kids for summer and after-school. But we're confident we're going to get there. With that, Ms. Martin, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent, we thank you all for your time. Have a great evening.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, take care, stay well. You too.